But then going on to the board's positions. Uh there um during on the beginning. So, who do you want to start with?
Let's go through the committees.
Alright, let's go through the committees. So here I lean, put this together. This is um a list of the thirteen committees that we currently um have board members on. Um so it's all the, it's the names of the committees and then um in parentheses on some of those. There's a number of how many people we have, um and then who's currently serving on those committees. Um so if there's one you really want to continue on, um we can talk about that. If there's one you're really interested in that you have not done, um let's talk about that as we go through. But first legislative liaison, um you've had two to three in the past. Um those this year have been Renee, Marilyn, and Barb. So, let's open that up for conversation.
I'd like to continue.
I would too. But we're not happy to step aside if anybody else wants to.
This might be. There might be a lot to do.
Yes, I kind of figured. I'm hoping there's not on my other issues, so.
And I've got the gift of time, so. But, like I said, I'd be happy to hold on.
Yeah, sure. So Renee and Barb would like to continue. Marilyn, did you?
I don't agree with continuing unless somebody else wants it, in which case I can.
I will probably be doing some anyway, but.
Okay.
Up to you.
Brooke or Christie or either of you interested in?
Probably kind of watching it, but I don't want to be on the committee. I'm watching every live.
Okay, alright, so if it, if everybody's good with that, we can just leave um those legislative liaisons as we've had over this year. Um the next one is the Cheyenne Schools Foundation Board. This one a couple years remains done at this past year.
I'd like to continue just because I finally got my.
Yeah.
My feet. Like, okay, now I get it.
If anybody else is interested, it is a brilliant fine committee or a board to be a part of it does need it. Seven or seven.
Seven in the morning, the first second.
So seven.
Second.
Once a month.
Oh.
So that one was hard for me with.
Yeah.
School age. So you'd like to continue? Is anybody else interested in?
But to paint it around?
Yes.
I don't know if that, if the charter of that foundation will be allows for one spot, so I'm not sure.
I believe it is just one trustee, although they do, there's been a push in past years for more community members to be on that committee, so.
We actually have, we're getting close to our numbers. We actually are voting.
You added some?
Tenth to add, I think it's four more.
Good, okay, so maybe, okay.
That number.
But I think they, I think the way that their composition has been set up, it was one trustee. I believe. Do you, does that sound right, Mary?
It does.
Just one, okay. So, is everybody okay with Renee continuing on with that one then? Hey, uh Cheyenne Community Recreation District Board, I'm a doctor, it's been myself and Brooke and Marilyn. Um this year Brooke has been our chair for that and Marilyn. Secretary. Okay. Do you two have thoughts about that, that board or?
I'm good with staying there.
Yeah, I enjoy it. I, I wouldn't mind staying. I, I've also been on it, I think, since being on the board. So if somebody else would like a chance, I'm open to. I would, I wouldn't mind giving it up, but I, I do really enjoy being on that one.
Okay. And I've been on it as well, and I, I guess if both of you do about it, I'd love to stay on, but if, if somebody else is really wanting to serve there, they can step aside.
I'd love to, but I don't.
Kristina, you served on it for quite a while too when we were the chair.
Yeah, uh, uh, you guys go for it. I've done my.
I, I.
You're okay with not doing it again?
Okay. And Brittany? Believe that one has its. Audit Committee um has been.
I think that's sort of dictated by.
That, okay. Assistant Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer. Um, okay, so that, once we get to the officer positions, then we dictate that.
Which is the same, but executive.
Same for Executive Committee, yeah. Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer.
And as your Director, we'd already voted on.
Yeah, um, we did already vote on Brittany for that, and then um Brittany is now the.
Vice Chair. Vice Chair.
Vice Chair for the Board of Directors for WSB. So she's kind of lost in there a bit.
They can figure it out if not, but yes.
Um, okay, so those all will, four and five will figure out in a bit. Um six will stay Brittany. Seven is the Calendar Committee. Right now Marilyn and I are on that. Um. I know Brittany's been on it. It is, um. The things you think won't be controversial sometimes are.
And a couple of those, and it gets a little spicy.
What, one are the? They're usually just two or three.
I'd be interested, but if you guys want to stay on.
It's a really interesting.
Yeah.
So Marilyn, were you wanting to keep on with that one?
Uh, I can keep on, uh, somebody else can do it, um, either way.
Um, you want to take my spot on that? You can.
Would it be something that you wanted to continue?
I'm happy to continue, but I do not. Okay, then. So we'll.
That committee is just fascinating.
No, you won't regret it. It is pretty fascinating, and it's.
I mean, I think it's good that you've. You've been a teacher, so.
More complex than you would imagine to put together.
Well, and it is probably the most teacher-driven.
Yes.
Committee that we do, I would suggest.
I, I saw there was a grand difference between the elementary perspective and the secondary perspective.
Um, so then Boundary Waiver Committee, right now is Barb. Do you want to let somebody else try that?
I'd be happy to. I've honored to. I, I only attended. I kept my mouth shut because that was just the principle they went on.
Yeah.
They're saying, but it was, it was interesting, and it kind of gave me a broader perspective of. How that's done. So, but I'm happy to attend as many off time to.
Anyhow, say, or why, did you try the Boundary Waiver? It's pretty fascinating. You don't ever see names attached to the waivers.
And initially I wasn't quite.
Oh, see, so they must not have known that I was.
Couple of years on that is probably not a bad idea.
Um, Christie, you've been doing the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Well, I've been signed up, but I'm not sure they knew to call me either.
Oh.
I'm sitting here going, yeah, I never heard from you.
I don't think they have a lot of names and muscles.
But I would like to learn about this, so I'd like to stay on this.
Do that one.
And hopefully they'll call me.
Is that at all a group that has to do with our issue with crossing guard et cetera stuff? Would that be a different?
Um, Chair, I, I think that would be more R E with the safe routes to school, which um I think this would probably be more on routes.
Okay, lessons.
Plus issues that come.
Okay, so Christie, we'll leave you on that one for another year.
Okay.
Um, Brittany, you have been on the Teacher Year Selection Committee. Are you willing to stay on that?
It's up to, if somebody else wants to do it more, if they can, it's great fun.
I actually like to do it. How often is it done?
So, starting. Very.
I know. Um, at the first of the year, we just sort of solicit nominations, and then there's the selection process. Say it's March, April.
So, yeah, there's not a ton of meetings, but you just have to review all the, all the applications. And there have been about forty applications the last few years. There could be, but.
It doesn't take too much time.
I'd kind of like to do it if you don't mind. I think it's a cool process.
Yep. You're good.
I think we'll put Renee on the Teacher Year Selection Committee. Everybody okay with that? Educational Support Person of the Year Selection Committee. Brooke, you've been doing that?
Yeah, I, I did this last year. I enjoyed it. I wouldn't mind staying on, but if somebody else is dying to see what that looks like, I'd be happy to. Let somebody else do it, but it was, it was really cool. It is, I mean, time-consuming with the um applications, but it's like. Extremely rewarding to read them over, and then getting to meet a couple of them. I really enjoyed it.
You don't appreciate. Amazing people.
Yeah.
Everybody okay? Brooke, continuing on and on, or anybody else really wanted? And Insurance Committee, um, we've had Brittany on that.
There's been various committees, yeah.
What's that?
There's been a few committees that I've been on pretty much the whole time.
Are you wanting to say on that one? Anybody else? Super excited to. I mean, it might be exciting.
We're gonna do this year, yeah.
Yeah, this, this next year.
Yeah.
So we'll leave you on that. Um, and then Parent Advisory Committee, um, we can all attend that. We need the first Wednesday of every month. So, um. Let's get with this. I may have something drastic to mention here, which I'm trying to get with my adjustment set up. Do you have something, Brittany?
Nope. I was just. With these holidays that I sit on.
Alrighty, um. So everybody's good with that? Okay, then we'll move into our, our board positions and then conversation about that. And so we can start with Chair or whatever order.
I suppose I'll start with Chair.
Start with Chair, okay. So, um, I have served as Chair for the past year. It's the honor to continue, but if anybody else is interested, then.
So just historically, um, just take two years, right? Yeah, we've done two years since, I think, when Story Hyler started that, prior to me coming on the board.
As I say, it's been that way since I've been on the board.
And I think you and Steve have a good working relationship, which I think is important to the board, and so I would support things we need to.
Lot of time.
Okay, okay. Um, moving on to Vice Chair. Are you interested in something to not in that?
I am, unless someone really desperately wants to be the Vice Chair.
I wouldn't mind trying. I think a couple of things. I think that um Vice Chairs. Being part of the Executive Committee, I think that it's good to be involved with as much things as you can. Um, and I've got the gift of time to give, but I think that would be good for me. I also think I have a good communication line from the school district to you um myself. And I was the one that heard about the video and shared that. I have, um, I, I feel that I, I brought up the ideas of cell phone thing probably and something that would address. So, I think I learned a lot, and I would like to try that.
And I actually pass the li- the language on cell phones, so.
Kind of a team effort, then.
Yeah, I think it's a team.
I'm hopeful that we can. Work together as a team, and I, and I pray that it doesn't go to the three, four split that I've seen for, for most of this year. I, I hope that we can try to see what we can best for our district, what's best for the children. So I guess I'd like to see some things change up.
I feel like we are finally on track. Um, I believe that focusing on proficiency scores and, and our performances in our classrooms. And really giving the support to our teachers that they need, not only in that area, but also in the area of behavior. And cell phones playing into that behavior, you know, uh, metric. I think those are super important, and it's not been the history of our board to go in those directions. And emphasize those as important goals. So I feel like I have been someone who has been influential and carrying that message, and I know you've supported those videos too. Um, and I'm really thankful that the board sees the value in those priorities. So I would like to be a part of the executive team, because I feel like we're finally going in a direction that. Um, my, my contacts, my friends have to need help in the buildings, and this is the areas that they want to see. Us focus on, so I'm grateful for that, and um that we've gotten agreement as a board.
I, I saw you real busy this year, and so I, I feel that people going on the boxes on board need to be out there and. Attending a lot, and I, and I. One example, Christie, was when I brought up from the board, when we were up on the dais. The crossing guard, and I had put out lots of questions, and your response was good questions, trustee Cook, and then you moved on. So we never got to discuss some of the things that I was concerned about, and then now within the last couple of weeks, we've had a couple of children. Hit, and so I think we need to address that, and then you came to me two weeks later and said, I was so busy, I'm sorry, I haven't gotten back to you. And at that time, I presumed I went other directions, but I do think sometimes our board struggles with discussing stuff openly. I mean. We do, and I think that we're all elected officials, and they're expecting us to talk about things in an open manner. And that's where we get the best solutions, is when everybody puts their heads together and said, let's think about this. But we don't seem to do that as well as I think.
So Barb, just to address that, I appreciate you bringing that issue up, but that was the thing where I was asked to chair. That up, and I didn't think what you were gonna say, but when you did, I thought, I've asked the same questions, and I think I said that on the dais. But I'm not in charge of the answers, right? You understand that? So when I followed up with you and said, sorry, it's been a couple, you know, it's been a week or so. Um, but I was actually curious to start a dialogue, and you had, you said, I don't even know that you replied to that. I can't remember because that was a few months ago, but as a trustee, I'm also interested in the safety of our children. But as a trustee, a few years ago, when I looked into it, when I was a new board member, I also was confronted with a lot of the obstacles. As you have now been, so I think we need as a board, not to blame one or the other, but to see if there's consensus amongst us. To work on an issue, to solve the problem around those barriers, so. It does seem a little like you're throwing me under the bus. I understand why you want to get in that position. I get that. But I'm not the reason you've been frustrated, right? It's the issues, the, the issues you're running into, so let's keep those two separate. I think too, I don't talk about everything I go to from dais. So, just because other people say they were at the Trades Academy, doesn't mean I wasn't there. So you need to understand that too. I get out into our schools. And I've also been on the board the longest, so I understand and know a lot, probably just about different issues like the crossing guard issue, right? Um, so I think there's some value added to that.
Absolutely.
But I'm not trying to say that I don't appreciate your voice too. It's just the Executive Committee is three people, and so we need to think about as, as a board, how do we listen to everyone? And give people chances to bring up their issues and really discuss, because that's important, and that's, that's kind of dictated by our chair, right? But, um, as an executive committee, then we, we get the board's consensus. And we talk about how to unfold and get, make progress on that, and I think that's where my strengths are. So that's why I would like to stay involved in the Executive Committee in some fashion.
And I also think too, that fresh ideas from a different perspective would be also beneficial to the board. So even though you've been on the longest, it might be nice to have some fresh. That's why I'm.
Sure. So. Logistically. We have gone through and nominated, had somebody nominate a second. How did we do that?
I still believe we will vote on two of them, just.
One, please say. Hi, Rick. You'll nominate it, and we can nominate out there.
And you vote for one.
And then you, if you get. Sorry. So you would, you would nominate um one trustee, um get a second, and then you'll vote on that. If there is a uh majority of the board that votes on that one, then you would need a second nomination. If there's not, then you would move on to your second. So you would.
So should I vote tonight then? Because normally I don't.
Um, so Madam Chair, yes, so there would likely, I mean, unless it's.
So, just take the vote, and then I'll just see.
And I would just say the one, I, I do agree with some fresh perspective. I think the one thing that has been. Little uh fresh air for me is the support that Barb has from so many of the teachers. And I think it's just because you were part of them for so long. Um, and that is something that unfortunately, given the book issues that we've had in the past. Um, Christie, you don't necessarily have as much support amongst a, a large proportion of the teachers because of those issues. Because of how that played out, um, and that would be one benefit I would see of having somebody with a lot of teacher support. In that position, so that would be the only difference for me.
So. So you're pinning the book issues solely on me?
No, but just because of the, the book issues did. Um, turn a lot of teachers off of the board, and because of your stance on that. You are a part of the group that. The old teachers feel like they don't get a lot of support from the board because of, and a lot of it having to do with. It's not just you, but you are part of that group.
I understand there is a group of teachers that have certain views that you hold, I get that. Um, but I also think, to be fair, there is a group of teachers that hold the opposite view and understand what we did. Was not remove the books, but, you know, I'm not going to get into that issue. They understand what we did and appreciate it, so. I think that too is. It depends on your perspective, right?
Okay. Anybody else interested in this position? Let's keep going. Um, Treasurer, Brittany has served in that position for a year, right? Yeah, three years, so. Okay. So would you like to continue as Treasurer?
Um, I would like being Treasurer, um, because I could be using my knowledge base and skills most effectively.
I would conclude that her um financial mom.
Anybody else interested in being Treasurer?
I was just gonna say, I feel like we work pretty well together in that executive team.
Yep. Somebody else is dying to read a bunch?
Is anybody else dying to read a bunch?
Well, I'd be willing to do it, but I, I'm, I'm fine. Anyways. I didn't know if you were, had the, had a right time to, to do it.
Yeah. And that's where I think we could work as a team. I mean, that's where you've had it for a year. It might be nice to have Renee do it for a year. We're showing our people out there that, that elected us, we're trying to work together instead of being split entities. So, that's my two cents with.
I wish that the people out there knew that we really do work together quite a bit, I call you along. So it's, I mean, I think the elections are. But it gives us our roles for the year, but I would argue it is what we do work together, and I am thrilled with the fact. That I think we actually work together really well, even when we don't agree, we come back together and moving forward on lots of other things, so.
I think it has been nice in the last at least six months or more that, you know, when people say, oh my gosh, how's that for blah, 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 you're so, it's so crazy. I'm like, well, we've actually agreed on things. So.
I think that we've agreed. On a lot of things. And this first year has literally been information by fire hose for me. Um, but coming on to a board and having an entire order of women, it was. Not happy with that, I just. Works with way too many um. Women over twenty, like high school and the girls. And I, I just love working with absolutely all of you, because I don't. Do have those four, three splits. I don't know, I've been very impressed with the professionals. The women on this board.
How many daughters do you have?
I have four daughters. It's like the men are just like, I didn't say a word to any of them.
Because he has four daughters.
Okay, so Brooke, you would like to continue on. Um, Renee, are you wanting to put your name on that then, or no?
No. I'd like to stay probably assistant, so it's fun.
Okay. So I, I skipped over the assistant. So we have an assistant treasurer position and an assistant clerk position. Um. So you would be invested in being the assistant?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else interested in the assistant third position?
Renee, if you want clerk, we can switch. I'm good. Since we put on the board. As much as I love reading, I'm super good at it. Lord knew it would humble me. I had a really bad stutter growing up and like would never read out loud, ever. So, here we are, yeah.
It's been redeemed. Tonight I had it. There was a bunch of French.
Oh, gosh.
Like, I don't know.
They're really big numbers, though.
Oh, they get you.
How many zeros are on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you'd be okay with the assistant clerk? Anybody else want to be considered for assistant clerk? Um, Assistant Treasurer, I think Marilyn has that been you? And are you still wanting to do that?
I'm good with that, but it's been.
Good with that, but it's been a little.
She learned a lot.
I did. And I took an accounting class and I know a whole lot more words now too.
That is not a place I'd like to be.
No. Okay. And then we have just the trustee, not just, but a trustee position that does not have designated. So if anybody, I mean, I think we've got, everybody has set a position they would like to have.
Yeah, the trustee would be for a.
Or it would be whichever of you.
Yeah.
The trustee cooker myself. Okay. Okay. So we have the slate then would be me continuing on as chair. Um, Christie or Barb as vice chair. Uh, Brittany continuing on as treasurer. Brooke continuing on as clerk. Renee continuing as assistant clerk and Marilyn continuing as assistant treasurer. Does that sound around the same page with that's the slate? Right, then we will, um, vote on this. During the meeting, that's at the very beginning of our meeting. We'll do the slate and then I think that um, Jeff will do the swearing in and take care of all of that.
Much less last time. If I remain just the trustee, then I won't stand to be sworn in. Is that? Is that correct?
We got trouble when I did that.
They were just kind enough to allow me because.
Huh? Really?
Well, I got a lot of emails.
For not standing because people thought you weren't taking the oath.
Yeah.
Oh.
All the moms from Liberty Crew emailed me and said I was not petrified. Because I did not stand.
Because you were the member and then you got some nasty grabs.
Oh, check me out. I plan to stand.
I think it was like your oath for being on the board. Laugh for all.
No, nineteen years I allowed me to stand because my family is out. I wouldn't stand.
And that was your first meeting.
I was so, yeah.
But all the.
Okay.
Yeah, I can explain that. Yeah.
Yeah, we did. I know. But it was just the odd officer side of the trustee.
I remember you talking about that. My man was sending emails about why trustee.
To watch.
And then Jeff saves it.
Well, they were the chairperson, so I amounted to ten at the time.
It might be Jan as well, but just.
Yeah, like it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, I was like, whatever. I was, I didn't think seriously, but I mean, I. Sorry, I just emailed last year.
That's true.
Good evening. It is six o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees to order. If everyone would please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hi, I'm Mark Kirschner, Principal of East High School.
And I'm Lieutenant Colonel Chris Johnson, head of the Air Force Junior ROTC here at East. And we are going to present for you this evening, the Pledge of Allegiance by the Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets here at East.
Attention, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the root problem, which is saying it's one nation under God.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Newton, do we have any adjustments to this evening's agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no adjustments for this evening's agenda.
Okay, good motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
So a motion and a second to approve or to adopt the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has been adopted. We are going to move right into, I think, our favorite part of the evening, and that is our recognition portion of the meeting. And we're going to start tonight, actually, that's all we have tonight, are recognizing two students of the week. The first student that we will be recognizing tonight is Ally Cook, who's an eighth grader at McCormick Junior High School. And if I could have Ally along with Mr. Hatcliffe and Ally's favorite teacher Tara Lotterbach.
Yeah.
If you will, we'll just give it to you to take it away.
I thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to say a few words and then let Miss Lotterbach take over. But Ally Cook is one of our eighth grade students at McCormick. And she is again, one of those students that just embodies everything that we ask for out of the McCormick students. Great student in the classroom, but then also one of those students that just does a lot of extracurricular activities, not only for the school, but in our community. And so she's just one of those overall great students that's a McCormick warrior. So.
Last time I was here, I decided to bring it and that didn't go so well. So we've come prepared tonight. It's my honor to be with a student. I know I will live for years to come from the day first day I walked into my classroom, she stood out. And not in the way that a lot of students stand out in the classroom, but because she carried herself with a quiet confidence and a genuine desire to learn. She is motivated, mature, young, good news, and involved in our school community. And she's incredibly bright. But what truly sets Ally apart is her heart. She doesn't just care about learning strongly, and she cares about understanding, growing, and uplifting those around her. I've seen Ally pause her own work to help her classmate who's struggling. I've seen Ally take the time out of her busy schedule to help a friend who had fallen behind. It's Ally's dedication, kindness, and leadership that make her the exemplar of an LCSD One student of the week. And it's truly a pleasure to be her teacher.
So my main reasons for choosing Ms. Lotterbach as my favorite teacher, she gives all of her students a comfortable environment to talk about, like, not just what they're doing at school, but what they're doing outside of class. She makes learning about history an easy and fun class. And she interacts with their students and seems like generally, she's generally interested in like what we do outside of school. So, yeah.
I'd just like to take a minute to also recognize, she has some family here. So if Joanne, Tim, and Chris could stand to be recognized also. Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Yep, you guys will just hang out over here for a minute, then we'll do a little more recognition for you here in a second. The next student that we'll be recognizing tonight is Isaac Clay, who is a 12th grader at senior high, or I'm sorry, at East High School. If I could have Principal Mark Kirschner and Isaac's favorite teacher Travis Eldridge come forward with him, please.
Good evening, I'm Mark Kirschner, Principal of East High School, and it's my pleasure to introduce Isaac Clay, the student of the week from East High School. Isaac challenges himself in the classroom. He's taken a lot of this college level concurrent enrollment classes. And he's also really involved in athletics, both inside and outside of school. He does football, wrestling, track and field, lacrosse, and baseball. But Isaac was chosen as the East High School Student of the Week mostly because he embodies what it means to be a leader. So Isaac is a leader in school and outside of school, and he's really well known for all of his community involvement. He's involved in the Boy Scouts, working on becoming an Eagle Scout, has served in several leadership positions, Senior Patrol leader. And he's really embedded with a lot of community service and most recently helped out with the suicide prevention walk. But the thing I think I remember most about Isaac, because we run into each other, so I was a student assistant in the Echo's office. Is that one time gave him the challenge of guarding hundreds of cookies as 1,500 students pass through the hallway, going from one class to the next. We had a reception going on, and the cookies were all exposed, very exposed. And we said, Isaac, since you're a student assistant, will you guard these cookies? And I don't think many students can pull it off, but Isaac definitely can. And I think we can say with confidence, not one cookie left that table until it was time. Is that fair, Isaac? Yeah. So Isaac is just, he's just a great, I don't know, kid. He's one of those kids that makes East High School a better place. And it's my privilege to honor him tonight. I want Isaac to talk a little bit about his future plans and introduce his favorite teacher.
All right. Check that out. So I don't have a written speech of Mr. Kirschner, but you know, I chose Travis Eldridge because not only does he have a great set of hair, but he's just a great coach, great teacher to anybody. Even help with workshop or any extracurricular activities or even just like math and science or whatever, he can help you. He's very fine with people helping you. He's just a great person. Makes me laugh and enjoys it. I'm very happy to have known him and grew with him. So thank you, Travis.
Well, it was my honor to get the email that I was chosen as Isaac's favorite teacher for this year. And as Mr. Kirschner mentioned, I just don't know that you can get much better person than Isaac. And I know as in the classroom and being in our athletic department at East High School, one of the big things as we focus on is we want, we want kids to be good human beings. And, and of course, we want them to be successful, but just how, how they treat people, how they act. And Isaac is a model, as Mr. Kirschner mentioned in several instances of, of just being a great person. He's, he's working on his Eagle Scout, and which is not an easy feat by any means, and is seen at all the activities. Often now in, in the classroom, if I have a student in there that's a little bit rambunctious and, and gets off task. And Isaac is often seen walking over and putting his hand on his back and, you know, asking him to, you know, maybe go for a little walk or something like that. But, you know, I think Isaac and I share a lot of just being kind of considered the gentle giants. And, you know, it's, I'm very proud of him. I know that next year he is committed to Shadrin State to continue his education. And he's going to have the opportunity to play a little bit of football as well. So we are just super, super excited for Isaac. And just we will miss him. It's been four years of having him in our building. And so again, I appreciate it, Isaac, and thank you so much.
And Isaac's mom's with us in the audience to hear the celebration. Please stand so we can recognize you.
Mr. Kirschner. Well, congratulations to our students and to their favorite teachers. Western Vista Federal Credit Union sponsors this awards program for student of the week. So at this time, I would like to invite Madison, I hope, is it Treeter? Treder? Treder? Who's the Member Services Officer for the Credit Union to come and say a few words.
Hi, everyone. Like Chairwoman said, I am Madison. I am a Member Services Officer at Western Vista Credit Union. We are honored to support Laramie County School District's Student of the Week program again this year. It was so great seeing all these amazing students being selected for this award. In recognition of the efforts put forth by student, the students of the week, we are proud to present a certificate of achievement as well as a Visa gift card. And for the favorite teachers, we would also like to present a certificate of appreciation and a Western Vista gift card. Congratulations for being selected as the students of the week, and we wish you success in the future. Congratulations for being selected as the students of the week, and we wish you success in the future.
Congratulations. And then, guys, we'd love to shake your hands, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The FBA meeting.
Congratulations to the students and their families. We are going to move into the information and reports section of our agenda. Uh, we would typically start with this with public comments from visitors on agenda and non-agenda topics, but we did not have anybody sign up for that this evening. Um, so we're gonna just move rather than talking about some upcoming meetings, uh, that we have here through the middle of January. Um, December third, this Wednesday, at six thirty PM, there will be a parent advisory committee here in the boardroom. As we discussed during our work session, board members are always welcome to attend those committee meetings. So if you have a free Wednesday night and, and would like to come and, and learn with that parent advisory committee, um, that's a, that's a great meeting. On, um, this one was not listed. We actually just finalized a time just a little bit ago. But on Wednesday, December tenth, we are going to have our next board planning session. We had a meeting with the executive trustees and the superintendent last week. Um, so this meeting I'd like to open up to two trustees. Um, we're going to start that Wednesday meeting at twelve thirty. It's a departure, because we've been having them on Tuesdays at one, but this one is Wednesday at twelve thirty. Um, do we have two trustees who would like to attend that meeting? Trustee Hinkle and anybody else? Want to come? No? Okay. Trustee Burton? Okay. Okay. So if you'll mark your calendars, but that's next Wednesday at twelve thirty. Uh, then on Monday, December fifteenth, we will have our last board meeting of the year here in the boardroom at six PM. Wanted to make note for, um, all of you, but also for everyone listening or tuning in tonight. December twenty-second through January second will be the district's winter break, so the offices will be closed. And, um, we'll reconvene, um, in January. January seventh, um, yeah, at six thirty PM will be the January meeting of the parent advisory committee here in the boardroom. And then our next meeting, or our first meeting in January as a board, will be on Monday, January twelfth. We will start at five PM with a work session, and then at six PM, we'll have our regular board meeting. All right, and now moving into individual board communications and reports. Trustee Ashby.
Um, so I wanted to see if we could have a bit of a conversation about sort of the safe routes to schools concept. I know this has been an ongoing conversation in general, and we've continued to have things, um, where the children are, um, struck in, um, on their way to school. And I know that different people have had different conversations, but wanted to, I've done a lot of thinking. We had a conversation at the planning meeting last week about it. Uh, you know, I know there's been ongoing conversations since I've been on the board um, about, you know, concerns about how, how we address it, what it looks like um, from logistics standpoint and all these different things. Um, but after we had the conversation last week, I was wondering, you, could we ask, you know, I, I know there's some schools that are doing, but they have crossing guards. And are doing things, I think primarily through their PTO or with some volunteers. Could we leverage what's happening there? And can we pull that together? Um, and I, we talked about this a little bit last week, and I've thought more about it as we went. Could we figure out a way to leverage that group and spread that so that it becomes a, something that is lever, or that is using those PTOs, using the volunteer groups to have crossing guards? I know that's really the push. I wonder what people thought of that.
Okay. Any reactions from the board? Trustee Hinkle?
Um, thank you, uh, Chairman Smith. Um, I guess the concern that was always brought up whenever we would discuss crossing guards, um, uh, and I fully support crossing guards for sure, was that there was some increased liability if we did have crossing guards. And I think that was part of why, um, a, a process has, had not been in place for a long time because of constraints with liability of the district versus city and those types of things. So has there been any change to that? And would, um, having volunteer crossing guards, uh, be okay? Where, where, where do we stand in a liability standpoint? I mean, I was in elementary school in the seventies, one time ago, um, and the sixth, the fifth graders were the crossing guards. I mean, that's what we did. We each placed who you could cross. We had fifth graders that would walk people across. But that was, you know, something that we did way, way back then, and I don't think, I mean, that's why we want to do that. But it was definitely a volunteer type thing, and could, it does work in some places, so yeah. But we stand liability.
Um, Dr. Newton?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Trustee Hinkle, I'm trying my best, but I'm, I'm probably not a very good lawyer, so I might, uh, form a friend here to Ms. Paulie. Um, there was some recent legislation that was passed, and my understanding is, um, that protects an individual crossing guard from being sued, um, for the work that they're doing. It does not, however, mean that a lawsuit could not be filed, um, against the district, against, um, whether that's by the crossing guard themselves. We did have a crossing guard at one time break their leg in the, um, in the road. So it does not preclude them from suing the district, and it wouldn't pre, uh, include a student or family, uh, or family on behalf of the student from, um, suing the district, which, uh, we've been in those situations before, like when, um, at one time, the district was sued, um, for a student injured on a playground. So it does not, uh, the work of the legislature, as much as we appreciate it, does not, um, take all of those concerns away. It, it was limited only to, um, the crossing guard being sued in their individual capacity. How'd I do on that, Ms. Paulie?
Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, Dr. Newton, I think you have it pretty well. If you think about the Wyoming Governmental Claims Act, which was the amendment that the legislature, um, enacted in the last session, um, it, it's not a, um, that, that the, a public entity such as the school district cannot be sued. It just limits, um, the amount of damages someone is able to recuperate under, um, a lawsuit under that act. So it would still, um, allow for, um, a lawsuit. It would be, um, it, the, the figure associated with that lawsuit is capped. And again, it, it does protect the individual, um, acting as a crossing guard. They're now covered under the Wyoming Governmental Claims Act, whether they're a volunteer or a district employee. Um, so I think to, um, maybe more directly answer, uh, Trustee Hinkle's question, there is, I, I, you know, if you think about, um, anytime the district is engaging in, um, an activity, um, it's, it opens itself up to liability. There's liability on, you know, as, as Dr. Newton mentioned, um, playgrounds, um, any, any activity, um, there's potential. So when you, um, engage in additional activities, your, your exposure to liability goes up. So there's, there's an additional exposure, um, but it, it has been at least, um, you know, for the individual, they're now covered under the Governmental Claims Act. So their individual liability would not, um, be as great in that situation.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, and are we preventing schools from doing a volunteer program? Has there been any, um, pushback to the schools who are doing a volunteer program?
Um, Madam Chair, Trustee Hinkle, um, no. In fact, um, we, some of the best success stories we have in our crossing guard programs are individual PTOs that have taken this on, parent volunteers. Um, I spoke with, um, one principal in particular last week, who said it's working better than ever um, because it's been taken out of the hands of the school into the hands of volunteers. Um, they set up the dates, who's gonna cover, um, the, um, and so, no, we have not, not only have we not discouraged it, um, maybe as Trustee Ashby, um, wondered, it may in fact be, um, the easiest, um, solution to implement. Um, some are already doing it with great success, and we absolutely could help others find the same success for their particular needs.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so I've just, Barb, I'm not ignoring you. I've been trying to just go down the line, but, um, Trustee Cook?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I choose to not live my life afraid of lawsuit. And that makes me sad that I think because people are afraid to get sued, we have not had crossing guards. And a child's life is way more important than any lawsuit that can ever be brought up. I know for a fact that there are schools that have crossing guards, and they're not volunteers. So I will work hard, however I can do it, to, and, and the, the short time that I was acting as a crossing guard this fall, this September, um, it wouldn't be a position that could have been handled by a young child. We were sworn at, we were yelled at, we were, um, it was quite eye-opening, and I saw police handing out ten tickets in twenty-four hour period on Yellowstone. And I'm thankful for the bus now that takes these children across Yellowstone, but I'm concerned that the two kids that got hit going to Rossman claimed that they lived too close and they couldn't ride a bus, and that concerned me. So I don't know, and that would be a question, Dr. Newton, that I'd have for you. Are there kids that cannot ride a bus because they live too close? And I also, um, I'll do what I have to do in order to keep kids safe, because that's what I got elected to do, and that's, um, I, I, I was eye-opening too, doing Davis, in that they brought it to the PTO and they picked it up like that. And parents, I mean, parents, um, took over. The, the positive to me, if there is a person in our school district, in the schools, that could be the crossing guard, they've already established that relationship. So they know the kids that are coming, so they know which kids are, I mean, I got, in my short little week and a half that I did it, I knew the kids that were coming, I waited there long enough, I waited for these kids to catch a bus, then I could get them across the street. A school employee would be able to know if that child was sick, if they were gonna be there that day. That's what I think, um, when I taught, we had our pairs doing bus duty, and it was fine. So, um, I'm sad that we have to be dictated to by lawsuits. And I pledge that I'm going to do whatever I can do in order to keep kids safe, and I, I wish that it could come from our schools, but if it can't, I'll do whatever I can do to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I add one, um, get to that? Thank you, uh, Trustee, uh, Kurt. One thing I think that makes us an additional, um, logistic, um, challenge for us is the times that we need crossing guards do not exactly coincide with when our pairs or other staff may be, um, on duty. And, um, because the safety of our kids is so very important, all of our existing staff is currently supervising kids on our school property. And so with many of the principals I spoke with last week, they, aside from legal liabilities, just in respect to, do we have, um, the ability to extend ourselves in that direction? What I heard from some of the principals I spoke with was we will have to lose them from other supervisory duties, and kids on playgrounds, or kids in lunchrooms, or kids in, in different parts of our existing, um, school footprint will have less supervision. And so I think that's, um, another aspect to this, aside from the liability side, is, um, if we were to use existing staff, uh, that staff would be removed from existing supervision on school property in order to, um, take on a supervisory position off of school property.
Thank you. Trustee Klassen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the conversation, and, and, uh, I don't think there's one of us, because I know you all, that doesn't care deeply about the safety of our children. I like the idea of, uh, asking our superintendent and staff to go forward with, um, some meetings and discuss the options for us at this point. And so I appreciate that being brought up by Trustee Ashby, Ashby, and, uh, I, I also think in those discussions, we need to talk about the details of how, how it works, because unfortunately, uh, the two children that were recently hit by a car, thankfully, they were not seriously injured, but still hit, weren't real close to their school. They were crossing a street and a car was going through the intersection and hit them. But that's an example of a detail that would need to be worked out. How far away do we provide these things, or do the PTOs provide them, or who? Who at that point can help our district? I think we should look at partners. We should involve our community partners, um, in that conversation to really get a holistic approach, because we do want safety for our students. And, uh, it's, it's, it's an important conversation, so thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else sign cross box? Trustee Burton?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair. Um, we have thirty-nine schools, and I don't think that the solution is a one-size-fits-all. I know that as a sub, there was one time I was asked to do crossing guard duty at the end of the day. I was at Athlebar. The traffic at Athlebar from the school to the neighborhood, literally across the street, there's not a lot of traffic. Um, and then we have areas where just the roads near the schools, um, Davis Elementary, um, North Yellowstone, the speed limit is forty miles an hour. And if people are not paying attention to those forty, thirty, twenty, um, flashing lights, um, that's a more dangerous intersection. College Drive, forty miles an hour. And so that's a little more dangerous than a school that's kind of tucked away. Um, I have a friend that has volunteered, I have seen staff members that have volunteered, I did it as a sub. It sounds like we have pairs that have, um, done it, um. And no offense, but if you have children who are seriously injured or killed, um, there's gonna be a nasty, nasty lawsuit. So we have to do, we have to provide for the safety of our children because their lives and their safety matter. Um, we have geniuses, and we have people in this community, we have staff, we have parents, we have community members who all care. Um, so one school, it might be the, the PTO, another school, it might be a staff member, um, for Davis, and um, the multiple school, well, Triumph and, um, Rossman and whatever else is along College Drive. You might have to involve city law enforcement. I mean, there's not a one-size-fits-all, and I think that we need to ask our es, experts in those communities to brainstorm ideas on what would work for each community.
Thank you. Trustee Humphrey, did you have anything on that?
I do not want to be redundant, so I support our kids getting safely to school and I'm happy to help however it needs to be done.
Thank you. Um, I don't think there's, and I, I mean, I there's not a person in this room and there's not a person in this community that doesn't want our children safe. I, I am positive that everybody up here, I mean, we have the, the seven board members, but Dr. Newton, our, our heart breaks when we get those messages that a child's been hit in a crosswalk. Um, it's not an easy solution though, I mean, and I think we all, we can wrap our brains around that, but what I'd like to do, um, as a follow-up, we, we did discuss this some during our, um, executive um, team meeting with Dr. Newton the other day. But what I'd like to do, knowing that we have the support of the board, Dr. Newton, is to ask you and your admin team to maybe, um, start working with the principals. Um, trustee Burden, you had a great point, it's, it really is a community issue, it is not just a school issue, the kids are crossing city streets, um, to get to our schools and there's, we don't own this, we don't own the streets around the school, so those don't belong to the district, so I would say if you might involve our SROs and our law enforcement, um, partners and partners from the city in those conversations. And let's start just getting a feel of how, um, maybe it is some volunteer groups at each school, but we have PTOs that are doing it and doing it well, so if we could find out from the principals how they've done it and let's see if we can maybe encourage that to be replicated around the district, might be a good start. But in involving all those folks in conversations, there may be some other ideas that this board hasn't thought of, but let's, um, I think you've got the will of the board to start those conversations and to make a change.
Figure out.
Um, because none of us want reports about kids in our district getting hit in the city streets, so.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Trustee Cook?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, also, I think the most recent children that were hit were on college, that might become. So if we can involve sheriffs, um,
Good point.
That would, that would be helpful as well.
Okay, okay, thank you, but I, um, yeah, I mean, I, I know this graves every single one of us when, when something happens to one of our kids, so um, I think this will be a good start and, um, this board certainly wants to be aware of all the things that are on your, in your team's plates, but, um, I, I think it's critical in all of our hearts that, that our kids get to school safe and if we can play some role in ensuring that, I that'd be great, I know you agree, so.
I'll provide that update as soon as I'm able.
Thank you, Dr. Newton, did anybody else have any other board reports, um, anything to share? Now that we're.
Can I do one?
Yeah, trustee Ashby.
And can I, I'm going to allow the hats that I wear in the community to overlap here for a minute. I just wanted to give, um, a big shout out to, um, uh, the schools, the elementary schools across, uh, the district, uh, I, um, in addition to this role, I also, um, work with the Rotary Club in Cheyenne. And, um, last week, the Rotary Club and the Qantas Clubs in Cheyenne teamed up to do, um, with the elementary school, specifically the elementary school librarians and, um, the pairs to do a Grateful Reads project where we provided books to the elementary kids and came in and read, but um, it's probably the most talked about thing that our club has done in a long time and so we loved coming in, everybody really enjoyed it and we appreciate the schools allowing us to do that with them, so.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to report that, and four of us, I believe, were able to, is that right? Four, five of us attended at least portions of the Wyoming School Boards Association Conference that been cast for the week, um, before Thanksgiving and um, you know, I had some super helpful sessions, I think my favorite part of that is always the legislative update. Um, this time they had a session, a breakout session that was, um, I can't imagine there were even many people in the other breakout sessions in that, that third, third time, but time slot, um, but it was just looking at, um, you know, sort of filling in school board members from around the state about the recalibration committee's, uh, recommendations and um, what they might be coming forward with in January, so that was a, a very lively, um, session that I, most of, I think most of the attendees sat through that, but, um, one of the, um, trustee Ashby hasn't patted herself on the back at all for this, but she had two very exciting things happen during that conference, she was recognized as, uh, with a level two award of distinction that's based off of, um, hours through their board certification program that you have attained, so she's got it, I don't, I didn't look up the hours that's in here, but she's earned at least three hundred, um, hours toward, or points toward that. Um, so she was recognized as a level two. Um, and then she also, she can correct me on this, but was sworn in as the vice, go ahead, vice chair for the Wyoming, the board of directors for the Wyoming School Boards Association, so she will be, um, vice chair this year, chair next year, president.
President-elect.
President-elect and then president, so she's, um,
Assuming we stick.
stepping into a few years of, of leadership there, but, um, that was exciting to have one of our own up, up on the stage, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? All right, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Newton.
Madam Chair, in keeping with that, uh, update about school boards association, um, the board of trustees received order honor from the Wyoming School Boards Association and received this plaque, it's, and I will read it if, uh, for those who may not be able to see it. Says certificate of recognition presented to the Laramie County School District Number One, Board of Trustees for their dedication to educational growth. And beneath that, it, it notes that all current board members have twenty-five or more board certification points. And I, I can't remember the exact conversion, but it's not just terribly easy to get a point, and so, um, having everyone receive twenty-five or more points is certainly noteworthy and, um, you were recognized as such, um, by the Wyoming School Boards Association.
Thank you. Sit down, please, and sit.
And, um, I do have one other report, and I apologize if it gets a bit lengthy, it's, uh, uh, that time of year where we submit a six-eighty-four report that gives an enrollment, um, uh, snapshot for a district, and so I want to give a few, um, updates and, um, and so, um, what I will say though is, um, enrollment data is tricky. And the reason enrollment data is tricky is you can either look at the accurate enrollment data on October first, when we reported to the state, um, that number is very much well established. However, on October second and the day before, it was probably very different, it is literally a snapshot. And, um, and so, um, enrollment data is very tricky. It, it absolutely depends on when you ask, because I was putting together this data today. Um, if a new student walked in to be enrolled, the data has already changed. So I hope that, um, the actual hard numbers you'll take with a grain of salt, I think there is a bit, uh, to be learned in the, uh, trends that we are seeing. The, um, the snapshot from last year on October first to this year unfortunately shows a decline in enrollment. Um, we are now down, uh, below thirteen thousand students, we're on our snapshot at twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine. That is a three hundred and sixty-seven student decrease from October first to October first. Um, sadly, we are down, um, an additional, um, forty or fifty from just out of the October first to today. If we looked at, at the trends there, we're seeing our least losses in the central triad, we're seeing our most losses in the south triad. Part of, um, the, um, as we break this even further, um, for reasons that are really hard to understand, it's really the beginning of the story, not the end of one, our junior high enrollments are relatively flat. The high school and elementaries are down almost to the kid about the same amounts. Why that would be, I do not know. Um, that just happens to be how the numbers look at this moment. So a fair question to ask may be, where did these kids go? I think the first thing I would say, it's important to note on that six-eighty-four report that, um, we officially have sixty-nine fewer kindergarten kids October first to October first. So the cohort size itself is smaller. And I think sadly as we remember that kindergarteners become first graders who become second graders, if that trend holds where we continue to see fewer kids born, um, in Cheyenne, we are going to see a decrease in student enrollment if for no other reason, and there are no other reasons, but if for no other reasons, simply the, the number of babies being born is less. Um, so the next few things that I will say, I, I want to give a, a couple of cautions. Um, the next few things I'm going to say are about out of district transfers only. I'm not talking about a student who maybe leaves East High School and enrolls at South High School. These are students who either come to us into the district from outside or leave us, um, to the outside. Um, so they're not school to school moves, again, this data is messy. It's, it's reliable data, but it's messy data, and I'll give one, maybe just one example of why I say the numbers are messy. The numbers are accurate in the aggregate, but when you get to the individual student, um, different things really confound the data. So for example, if a student drops out of school on a ten-day drop and then returns and then transfers out to Denver and then returns and then leaves again to go get their GED, they've effectively left us three times this year, what bin do we put them in? Do we put them in the GED bin with straight drop bin or we transfer to another school then? So at the individual level, it gets messy. Um, so when I say things like, it would appear, it's not because it may not be true, it's just really hard to, to, uh, pull this apart once you get to the individual students. Um, the first mistake that we can make when I say, um, that we're down over four hundred students, three hundred and sixty-seven at the October count, but over four hundred at this moment, is it's easy to think of having a body of students and then four hundred of them left us. That is not accurate at all. We have well over a thousand students that have left us. But we're only down a net of about four hundred and thirty-five right now. And that's because we have two hundred and fifty new students enrolled. So kids left, brand new students, uh, enrolled. We have over three, almost three hundred who left and then came back. And so again, that moment in time snapshot, are we capturing these three hundred kids as they come or as they go? Some kids come and go multiple times every year. As I looked at the data, a hundred and eighty-eight students left us this past year more than once. We had fifty that left us more than three times and we had one student who left, not again, not across the schools within our district, we had one student who left and returned to this district six times in one year. So again, the data gets very messy. Eighty-two students were with us less than twenty calendar days. Eighty-two students were with us less, so they were not even, probably if that's counting days, they probably did not even attend for more than two to three weeks of school. Um, so that makes it very, um, uh, difficult. Um, a hundred and thirty-three students had a ten-day drop. That's not, they moved to Missouri and they're living a good life there now. A ten-day drop means we don't know where they went. A hundred and thirty-three students were timid dropped who were early true age. This is alarming, these are students who have compulsory attendance, they're little ones. Hundred and thirty-three of them were dropped on ten-day. Um, now, something else that confounds our data like never before is parents who are homeschooling, um, who may be getting a wonderful experience homeschooling, um, do not by statute report back to us, so they're not compelled to report back to us like they once were. We used, this board used to at every meeting would recognize, you didn't approve, but you recognize the homeschool curriculum for, uh, homeschool students, that is no longer a, a thing that is done. So quit some of our students who left us and who think they're just disappeared off the planet as a ten-day drop, my baby, homeschooling, we just find, they know. They probably know. Which ones are they? We don't know, and we have no way of knowing, and that is rather alarming. Um, again, the wrong meetings are really, really messy, but I thought I would share with you some patterns. It looks like about a third of our kids who leave us go to another state and enroll in another school in that state. Twenty-six percent leave us and we don't know. About fifteen percent, um, transfer within the state but out of district. Some parents still notify us that they're homeschooling, so we have a record, now, um, are there those who left? Um, about seven percent are those. Um, if I were to guess, which is dangerous in this business, I would guess that about four hundred of our homeschool parents are not really reporting to us what their, um, intentions are, which of course is, uh, absolutely been written into laws, they're right. Um, we're seeing about, um, five percent that are discontinuing schooling for GED. Um, then we're seeing just a handful of kids that would be kind of all the other things that may happen, where they transfer into a special school, um, out of state private schools, it's just a handful. Um, immigrate, immigrate to another country, um, unfortunately, we had a couple that are now deceased. Um, and then, um, one student who withdrew for significant illness. So that's, um, again, I don't know that I would, uh, I, I think patterns can be gleaned from this, but I don't think the hard numbers, because students can account in more than one bin, um, is, uh, is terribly appropriate. So how do we respond? Um, one thing that we are charged with doing, as our funding is directly tied to, uh, the, the account of our students, is, uh, we have to right-size our staff. And so, um, irrespective of the coming legislative session with recalibration, we have some work to do simply because we have su- fewer students. And so, um, the, um, the other thing that I would say that makes this very tricky is, um, if we have four hundred fewer students, um, they, I think our current count is thirty-six schools. Not that all of our schools are big enough to see this kind of loss, but if you divided those four hundred by thirty-six, if it was equally, that's just eleven or twelve students per school. Now, certainly relatives and in-class and they're not seeing ten students move out of their school, they don't even have that many students. Um, but the reason I mention that is, um, high schools well over a thousand, junior high kids, or junior high schools well over eight hundred, this spreads out very quickly in a hurry. You may see us get to this number, decreased number, at any given school, maybe we've asked about ten or twelve kids. And so that makes it very difficult in our attempt to right-size staff, uh, because it's not as if all of the third graders who left, left from one school or one classroom. And so, um, if it's, if a individual school only lost a third grader or maybe two or three third graders, it may not be enough to collapse a third grade section. If you're a guidance counselor or a social worker or somebody like that, you still have a gigantic plate case load even if twenty to thirty kids left the school. So, uh, we stay even, oftentimes, it, it's, it's very difficult to find, um, the positions to collapse. Um, but we did last year, we, um, we had, we set a target to collapse thirty positions in light of our decreasing enrollment over several years. Um, and not only did we meet that goal, but we were actually down thirty-one positions last year. And so if we target thirty and we're down an additional eleven, why would we do that, you might ask? Um, and the answer is there were unfair vacancies. Um, the other problem that we have is, um, depending on the certification, depending on the need, we don't always have, um, a lot of people and in some cases, we don't have any people that apply for the job openings we do have. So it's a bit of a, uh, tricky proposition to right-size staff, knowing that certifications matter when and when people retire. when and when people retire or move along in their career. Um, as, um, this board, um, has heard me say before, um, when we need to right-size staff, it is much more preferable to collapse positions rather than people. And so some of that work is coming up very, very soon. We will start our registration for next year as early as late January, February. And, um, so that work is already beginning, looking at what does responsiveness on right sizing staff given the drop of over four hundred kids in our system. So I would certainly stand for questions, Madam Chair, but, uh, with that, that is the end of my report this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Okay. Thank you for the update. All right. The first meeting in December, um, is always our organizational meeting. Uh, so we had a work session prior to um, our six o'clock meeting where we talked about committee assignments for the coming year. And then just got a sense of who would be interested in filling, uh, different roles on the board. Um, so at this time, um, we will look at our election of officers. Um, the first, and how we'll do this, um, is I will say that the office we're looking at, um, will take nominations and then we'll vote on, on those. And we'll just go by position, um, through all of them. So the first office that we are looking at is the chair position. Um, do we have a nomination? Have to have a nomination. Trustee Hinkle.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. I would nominate you, Chairman, to continue on for the next year.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Yes, we have a, a a nomination and a second on that. Are there any other nominations for that position that this, for the coming year? Okay. So seeing done, we will vote on that, um, and then move on down the list. So all in favor of me continuing on as the chair for the, the twenty twenty-six year, well, end of twenty-five to twenty-six year, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm happy to do that. Thank you for the nomination. Yes, trustee Cook.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we're missing one of our trustees.
Yeah, and we, um, as long as we have, I mean, we have meetings where we don't have everybody here. So with the majority, we're, we're still okay to move forward. Um, all right. The next position that we will be looking at is the vice chair position. Do I have a nomination for that? Trustee Humphrey?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Christie Clausen.
Okay. And do we have other nominations? Oh, yeah, we need us, do we have a second for that?
Madam Chair, I, um, second that nomination.
Okay. Thank you for naming me. Okay. Uh, the other nominations, trustee Hinkle.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Bob Cook, please.
Okay. And do we have a second for that?
And I'll second it.
Okay. Yeah. So we're, we're just getting nominations for each position. We're going to vote and then move on to the next position. So we did share where you were going. Um, with this, I, I did, um, anticipate that we would have two names for this. So I did visit with Ms. Polly just to make sure that we were doing this right. Um, we'll vote, um, are there any other nominations for that position? Okay. So we will vote on, first on the board member that was nominated first. And then we will vote on the board not member that was nominated second. So it will be, uh, uh, is, is that right, Ms. Polly? Am I saying that right? So we'll, we will vote on, um, trustee Clausen first. And if she has, I guess if she has a majority vote, then we, we will know that, that she would be continuing in that role. If she doesn't, then we will, um, vote on, on trustee Cook. Um, so we have a nomination that has been seconded to have uh, trustee Clausen serve in the vice chair position. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't think we need to do that.
Well, okay. So we're, we, I think we're going, I believe I had three ayes. Um, so I'm guessing that means three noes. And, um, so that means that I vote to break that tie. Um, so I would support trustee Clausen continuing in that. Um, we've had a a lot of years of service on the board and really have a wealth of knowledge of the district and, and what we're doing and, um, moving things forward. So, uh, trustee Clausen then, um, would have four votes. And I, I think we can just stop there then. Um, okay. Is that, Ms. Polly, did I do that right? All right. Uh, moving to the treasurer position, do I have a nomination for that?
I'd like to nominate Brittany Ashby for treasurer.
I'll second.
So I have a nomination and a second for Brittany Ashby. Are there any other nominations for that position? Okay.
Um, really, that was trustee Hinkle.
Okay. So all in favor of Brittany serving as treasurer for the coming year, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That was unanimous. The next position is the clerk position. Do we have a nomination for the clerk position? Trustee Clausen.
Madam Chair, I nominate trustee Humphrey for clerk.
Okay.
I'll second that.
No, a second from trustee Ashby. Okay. So trustee Humphrey has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the clerk position? Right, seeing done, and we will vote on trustee Humphrey serving as clerk for the coming year. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Got this unanimous as well. Um, and now we have an assistant clerk and assistant treasurer position. Um, so for the assistant clerk position, uh, do we have a nomination of a trustee for that? Trustee Burton?
Um, Madam Chair, I nominate, um, trustee Hinkle.
One second.
Yes, we have a, a nomination and a second for trustee Hinkle. Um, are there any other nominations? All right. All in favor of having trustee Hinkle serve as our assistant clerk from there, please say aye.
Aye.
We also pass this unanimously. And the next position is the assistant treasurer position. Uh, do we have nominations for that?
I'll nominate, uh, Marilyn Burton.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a nomination and a second for Marilyn Burton to serve as the assistant treasurer. Uh, are there any other nominations? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That one I still pass this unanimously. The seventh position on the board is, you know, is the trustee position. Um, so trustee Cook, that will be your position for the, the coming year. Thank you, everybody. It's a lot sometimes to step into these positions and commit to, to what the different roles entail. So thank you. Get that back to this. So at this time, we have a new slate of, or we have the officer slate approved. Um, I believe now it's time to move to the, um, administration of oath of office for the elected officers. Um, there have been times when we've done this that the uh, board member who will serve as trustee has not taken the oath because they've already taken an oath to serve as trustee, but, um, I, it's, it's my understanding, it would be okay for the trustee to take the oath to serve in that seventh position, is that correct?
Madam Chair, be welcome.
Okay. So if everyone, um, Mr. Siccarelli, if, um, if you're prepared to do the oath of office, we'd love for you to come out. And I will point out, this oath of office is different than the oath of office we take when we are elected to this position. This is an oath, uh, for the office that we serve in on the board. Is that correct, Mr. Siccarelli?
Madam Chair, that's correct. And, um, when I, um, asked for you to state your office, it would be these positions that you just reviewed here a few moments ago. So, um, whenever the board is ready to get to stand and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support, obey and defend
That I will support, obey and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
and the policies of Laramie County School District Number One.
And the policies of Laramie County School District Number One.
that I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not openly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
all the duties of my office with fidelity.
All the duties of my office with fidelity.
as the, state your position.
And as the biggest treasurer.
of the Board of Trustees of Laramie County School District Number One, State of Wyoming.
Of the Board of Trustees of Laramie County School District Number One, State of Wyoming.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Siccarelli. We will move into a consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does any board member request to remove a motion from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda.
And I second.
A motion and second to approve all motions listed as consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those have been approved. Next on our agenda is new business. Uh, we just have one item tonight.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize filing such legal action as may be necessary to determine the legality and applicab- geez, applicability of the shut, city of Cheyenne stormwater fee.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to, I'm just going to read it, authorize filing such legal actions may be necessary to determine the legality and applicability of the city of Cheyenne stormwater fee. Um, do we have any questions or discussion on this item? Trustee Clausen.
Madam Chair, I'm going to try to tread lightly, but I think that it was definitely an interest of mine, I think a number of us, to try to work with and reach out to uh, city council members on this issue regarding what they hope to accomplish and if there was opportunity to work with them. And I think that what we heard back has led us to this point. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. It's a little tricky with legal items. All right. There's no other discussion on that. Um, we will move to a vote. So all in favor of authorizing filing, uh, legal action as may be necessary, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, it's been approved. All right. The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. The business of the district is now done. Uh, do we have a motion for executive session?
Madam Chair, I move to go into executive session prior to adjournment for the purpose of possible student long-term suspension, expulsions, personnel, legal advice, potential litigation.
And I second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go into executive session at this time? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will go into executive session and reconvene.